Justin, are we all set?
We are reconvening the meeting on March 17th after a brief recess. We will continue with new business. Item 4A, zoning ordinance map amendment. Western Avenue Planning and Development Committee recommendations to refer to the Planning Board. Chair recognizes Counselor Saroy on this issue.
Excuse me. The first item that the Planning Development Committee is recommending is that the zoning ordinance map amendment be referred to the Planning Board as part of public hearing and recommendation. The land parcels involved include the north side of Western Avenue, east of Route 202, also the Catholic Church and Parsonage, map 32, Lot 1, map 32, Lot 2, 3, and 3A, all owned by Frost, map 32, Lot 4, owned by McHugh, on the south side of Western Ave, starting at the front corner of Katahdin Trust Bank, which is map 36, Lot 30, 29, Gilbrak?
Gilbrak.
Gilbrak, thank you, and map 36, 27, and 27A, TDS. Total land area to be rezoned on the north side of the street is 13.25 acres, 10 acres from Resident A to Business District B, and remaining 3.25 acres from Village Commercial to Business B District. Land area to be rezoned on the south side of the street is 6 acres, all of Village Commercial to Business B District.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. What is the pleasure of the council? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve or to send this to the Planning and Development Committee for public hearing.
Planning Board.
I'm sorry?
Planning Board.
Planning Board, I'm sorry, for public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay. It has been moved by Counselor Saroy and seconded by Counselor Lawless to refer this matter to the Planning Board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Motion carries. Zoning ordinance text amendment, Business B District Planning and Development Committee recommendation to refer to the Planning Board. Counselor Saroy, again, I look to you on back for background on this.
Again, the Planning Board and Planning Development Committee is recommending the zoning ordinance text amendment to refer to the Planning Board for public hearing. One of the goals is to make certain that existing use did not become non-conforming issues after a map amendment was approved, thus adding to the permitted use of his single-family dwelling and home occupancy, adding to the condition used are auto and truck sales and service, storage facility, church and funeral home. Additionally, the conditional use do not contain a number of uses that seem likely to be useful to the district, including mixing residential and commercial uses, daycare facility, children's center, preschool, commercial schools, places of assembly, nursing home, community facility, community buildings, hotel motels, and buildings for essential services. A second goal is as follows. The Business B District yard requirement, a significantly larger than now, is in effect Village Commercial and looking out for those single-family residents that are to become part of Business B District. Staff suggests borrowing the concept from Residential B District to provide relief for existing smaller lots with regards to yard back sets. Finally, there may be a need to build in the district in excess of 35 feet in height. With that in mind, the staff has added language that would allow taller buildings with the additional setback consistent with the concept that was previously developed for all commercial districts.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. What is the pleasure of the council? Have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we send this amendment to the Planning Board for public hearing.
Second?
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Saroy and seconded by Counselor Ryder to refer the matter to the Planning Board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 4C, making all council and committee meetings ADA compliant. Brian Dupre, Chair recognizes Representative Brian Dupre.
I apologize for not having my mic on earlier. For those who didn't hear me, welcome to my world. Madam Mayor, members of the Hampton Town Council, my name is Brian Dupre. I live in Monroe Road. I'm a disabled veteran, having lost 75% of my hearing in the U.S. Navy. I'm making one last-ditch effort to ask the Hampton Town Council to make committee meetings and council meetings ADA compliant. Been asking this for months now, continue to be denied. There's only one committee chair who's responded to my repeated requests, and that's Mayor Dupre. She's made all our meetings, her committee meetings ADA compliant. I thank her for that. Americans with Disabilities Act passed in 1990, which made all local, state, federal government buildings compliant with the ADA rules, and all public meetings need to be accessible, those with disabilities. Town of Hamden, in every committee meeting I've attended, just about a third of the council meetings, I've had to embarrass myself many times by asking counselors to speak up and even been ridiculed for doing so. I've asked chairs to make sure all facets of meetings were on microphone. My request has been ignored. Went to a services committee last week. I had to insist the microphone system, as that's the only way I could use the hearing device, and you can see I don't have it tonight because it doesn't work. The mayor asked people to use the microphone, but it stayed in front of the chair the whole time, and when the mayor tried to get it moved in front of a counselor, his response was they could all hear me. Well, I couldn't. The chair had four members of the audience speak, but at their seats and not on the microphone, I was unable to hear any word they said, and I had comments to make during the public comment, but I never heard the chair announce it, so I missed out. And I'm here today embarrassing myself and asking the council to think of the citizens with disabilities when you're speaking. I've heard many complaints from people in the audience who not only have, who don't have a disability, how hard it is for them to hear. The sound system in this building is horrible. When I was collecting signatures at the transfer station last week, Mayor Dupre and I received several complaints from residents who watched the meeting on Channel 7. They say the sound quality is horrible, and they have to turn their TV all the way up, and it's a very poor quality, and when then they change the channel, they get blasted out, not realizing that it's super all the way loud. Again, it's the sound system causing that problem. I believe an immediate upgrade to the system would solve a few problems. First, it would allow those who are elderly or with disabilities who prefer to watch a council meeting at home to be able to watch it with adequate sound quality. Secondly, it would provide a digital recording of all meetings, much better than the prehistoric cassette tape system that we currently use. It will also allow citizens to spend their time to come to a meeting and be able to hear well, and lastly, those like me will be able to come to a meeting and not feel so embarrassed for not being able to hear. I know you're waiting on communications money to come in. There has to be a funding stream that you could find to do this in a shorter period of time. It should have been done years ago, and you could reimburse that fund when the communication money comes in. I know these are tough budget times, and some of you maybe think spending money to benefit so few people would not be worth it, but trust me, it would help a lot more people than just me. I hope you'd seriously consider my request, and I hope I can hear your debate on the issue. Little pun intended there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Okay. What is the pleasure of the council? Do we have any motions on this item?
A motion for what?
A motion to make all committee meetings and council meetings ADA compliant.
What is that?
That, just for the, for people with...
Well, my question is, what is ADA compliant? Okay? As I, and with all due respect, I know all about not being able to hear. That's why I talk loud, because I've only got like half hearing in my left ear, and not as bad as Representative Dupre. I know Tom Brand has hard hearing. I know Ivan Pike has said he's got, huh? What? And maybe Saroy. You know, most of us who have spent time in the military understand that you don't fire motors and rifles next to your ear without ear protection, and maybe Brian was on an aircraft carrier with a loud noise. I can understand, but, and I think we need to be ADA compliant, no question about it, but my question is, what is ADA compliant? The sound system does need improvement. There's no question about it, and I agree with him about it being put over the Channel 7. My wife has to turn it way up to another zone in order to hear it, and then something else comes on, and it blasts you out, and I've heard other people say they can't hear it at all, and, but my question is, what do we have to do to make it ADA compliant, especially for Representative Dupre? Because I've got an email here where it says with hearing aids, it corrects him to close to normal, okay? Because he lost 70% of his hearing in the U.S. Navy. And do we need to just upgrade our sound system here? So, from what I understand, ADA, we just have to make it available for him to sit, for instance, in a front row so he can hear, but if our system isn't good enough, then he's not going to hear, obviously, and a lot of the public isn't going to hear, and I agree with that. So, I don't think we can make a motion on something we don't know what we're making a motion on, other than we all agree it needs to be ADA compliant.
It, I, I will let him come up if I'm wrong. I think what he's asking is for, at this time, yes, we do need to upgrade the system, which we've talked about, and we're waiting for Time Warner money to come in, which I'm not exactly sure when that was coming, but the other thing is committee meetings, which there are no microphones used at most of the committee meetings. So, they are a problem with, there's no microphones at all, so...
Correct.
And when is that that we were waiting for that money?
Later this year, upon signing a renewal on the contract, which is... Which is, thank you, which is being negotiated as a group through the Penobscot Cable Consortium. ADA requires us to make a reasonable accommodation for people with disabilities so that they can fully participate in whatever it is you're doing.
Correct, correct.
The, we have a small set that is supposed to allow to hear, but it's gauged to work when this system is working, and it's not gauged to work if there's nothing else. If there's no electronic broadcast system, then you don't get any hearing over this I spoke to Counselor Dupre tonight. There's one of our employees who has an item that, it's something he wears around his neck that, and he has hearing aids, that he can hear better just in regular conversation with it. Now, whether it requires a more technically advanced kind of hearing aids, I don't know, but we can certainly look into whether something along those lines might work here for some people as, you know, in the interim. That's another, but the idea is that people who come need to be able to hear somehow or, we have had in the past, and it was the distant past, when we had someone who couldn't hear at all, that we were doing braille. We were doing sign, braille, I'll have it closed, sign language at some meetings. We've made that accommodation in the past as requested. So, making them ADA compliant would be the town taking steps so that persons with hearing disabilities, which is the present one, but it also requires that our doors be wide enough to get in and all of those kind of things.
Right, but reasonable steps to accommodate an ADA, well, it's not an ADA person. It's a person with a disability, some kind of disability, yeah.
Could I, rather than make a motion, could we just provide direction in the sense that, understanding it has to be hooked up to this system, and if we put one of these mics, because we all like to meet around the table, best conversations we have at home is around the kitchen table, so I think having our meetings around a table, I think, is conducive to, you know, a good conversation, a good working environment. That being said, to provide support, is there any way to get, I call them spider phones, but spider mics that you put in the center that will pick up anything going along so we don't have to rely on these that would hook into this system? Do we know of anything, or can we investigate that? I know we've got the recorder and everything else, but just trying to find a way to accommodate that.
The difficulty, it's not a difficulty, it's what happens is when you turn this system on, it broadcasts. So, even if you're not shooting a picture, they might be watching, people might be watching slates, or it might interrupt the rebroadcast of a council or a planning board meeting. When the mics are on, the mic system is on, it goes out over the air. So, what you're doing when you turn them on, whether, no matter what kind of microphone you get, and we've experimented with other kinds of microphones for the council to use. We had headsets, and we had other stuff, is that you're going to be, if this system is used, you're going to be sending it out over the air. However, we do have a portable sound system now, in-house, out back, that's portable, it's on a cart. It could be brought out to be used at these, which would allow a speaker system in a meeting that doesn't go out over the air. So, we could investigate that for the use in committee meetings if the council wanted to do that. We could try that to see if it would be a way in which...
That's what I was going to bring up. I, a number of different meetings and boards that I've been on and stuff, we've had exactly that. It's a little small box with a microphone system on it.
It's a little more, this one has six mics.
Yep. The other thing, a little bit of time I've been on here and seen it, when we have a committee meeting, we've never been objectionable to having someone come and sit at the table with us. I've seen it done before, and we can certainly put in a large enough table here, is, Mr. Dupre, would you be able to hear if you sat at the table? But maybe if we bring that in and try it.
Yes, Counselor Brand.
This sound system with these speakers predates broadcast TV and cable, and we also had a hearing device, the one that we have, that is keyed into this machine. I don't understand why it's not possible, simple, to walk into the broadcast room and go to the cable to take sound from this device and pull it out and not broadcast. I mean, it worked before.
That's a good question.
Before we ever had TV cameras, before we ever broadcast anyplace. This is the system we had.
I just have one question. If this is discussed, that we try this, too, would it be up to the committee chair unless we vote on it as a council? If the council doesn't actually make a motion, we... Did you?
Sorry. I think what Counselor Brand said is right on. I mean, it's as simple, there's one, should be one cord going out, and it should be as simple as unplugging. Now, I don't know if that takes the system into orbit, but I think we investigate all the different solutions and make a decision from there.
Okay. Yes, did you have another?
If we're going to go into, or if you're going to go into spending more money on a audio system, then I believe we have to stop relying upon the franchise fee that we collect from cable TV viewers to fund all of our communications. It's not fair. It's a sneaky, slimy backdoor tax, as far as I'm concerned. If we're going to be making improvements to the system for the general public, so the general public, when they hear or anywhere around all over internet, listening to our broadcasts, then the general fund needs to share in those expenses, not just the people who have cable TV.
We will have to investigate what the cost would be and see, we don't even know if that would cover it anyway. All right, so we will investigate some different options and bring this up at a future meeting. Item 4D, transfer station decal increase from $5 to $20. Infrastructure Committee recommendation, the Chair recognizes Counselor Ryder.
It was brought up at one of our infrastructure committee meetings a month or so ago. One of the counselors recommended changing the fee from $5 to $20 for a transfer station sticker. It was discussed, it was voted on. Vote was five to two to recommend to the council to increase it to $20.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion that we increase the transfer station decal fee, and I want to discuss that in a minute, from $5 to $20 per year.
Do I have a second?
Per vehicle, per year.
Per vehicle, excuse me. Well, yeah.
Did you get a second?
Yes, yes. Discussion? Yes, Counselor Shakespeare.
Well, I'll take the heat on this. Counselor Ryder said in a counselor, well, it's Counselor Shakespeare, and there may not have been any public comment from this room, but I'll bet there's a lot of public comment out there, especially when they find out they're not going to pay $5 anymore for a sticker, but it's going to be $20. Now, I'll give my reasoning for this, and I'll take the heat from any public that wants to shoot, not literally shoot me in the foot, but give me the devil for it. Most individuals probably go to that transfer station, I'm going to say, once a week. In the summertimes, some individuals, I'm sure, go more than that. I know I go to the CND, which is, stands for Construction and Demolition, usually more than once on a weekend, especially if I'm trying to get rid of some brush and some other home debris. $5 was initiated years ago. In fact, I was, one of the public got up here. I think I got it rolling because the fees and, the cost and expense in general for the transfer station was exorbitant, because we were having individuals from other towns, not just locally. I'm talking about down the coast. I guess Sue said they caught one individual coming in with stuff to get rid of. Caught one individual from Bangor with multiple refrigerators and other stuff that, I guess he had some apartments. But anyways, so we, the town initiated the sticker system. Well, $5 is quite a deal, and my rationale for making it $20 is that not everybody uses that transfer station. Not everybody in the town, not everybody uses the CND, and not everybody uses the pool, but if you use the pool, you have to pay a fee to use it. So, those persons basically that use it pay a little bit more than the rest of us taxpayers pay, because everybody pays for the pool, everybody pays for the library, everybody pays for the transfer station. A lot of people call it a dump at times, but it's not a dump, Sue will tell you, it's a transfer station, because we transfer material from one place to another. The $20, I have been after for years for it to go up to $20, and the council has always turned it down, and finally, I guess my reasoning has held here, except for Tom Brand, he's against it. It's one thing we do disagree with, but that's okay, we agree to disagree. But $20 is a heck of a deal. You go to other communities, especially down Southern Maine and other places, $20 would be a joke. They say we pay hundreds of dollars to use our transfer station. And personally, I don't want to go to the bag system like they have in Brewer. Denise lives in Brewer. I think you pay, used to pay, what, $2 a bag, is it? If you want to get rid of your goods? And what's happening there, I'm sure a lot of people will take their garbage and, as Mayor Dupre has said, I guess, dump it in somebody else's dumpster so they don't have to pay the fee. So, anyways, I feel that $20 is quite a deal, and our town manager is going to take a lot of heat at the counter when people come in this next year to try to buy a sticker for $5, that they're going to find out is $20, and a lot of people are going to say, like Gene, instead of having, and Tom, instead of having two or three vehicles with stickers on it for the transfer station, they're going to say, I'm only buying one from now on. Well, that's their prerogative. I only have one. I have actually three vehicles, and I only have one that I use at the transfer station. So, you know, I just personally felt that $20 was one heck of a deal. That's my opinion.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to say a little something. Last year, I guess we sold over, just over 3,000 stickers. So, we brought in $15,320 at $5 a permit. If we went to 20, we'd bring in 61,280. So, we've increased 45,000, but from the people I've talked to, they're not going to buy $20 stickers for two vehicles. They'll just get one. We've discussed that here, so, you know, from the survey that I've done from different people, say you lose a third of those stickers, so now you're down to 2,043 stickers. So, you price that at $20, you're at 40,000 versus my option, if we charge 10, people will still buy two, and it isn't quite so hard to swallow. That figures out to $30,000 revenue, we're only $10,000 less than your $20. And I think people will go along with $10 a lot quicker than they will with 20. I think it's an awful big jump.
Yes, Counselor Shakespeare.
Did you propose that at the meeting? Because I don't recall $10. I know Mayor Dupre proposed something, but I don't recall the $10, and maybe I...
I didn't propose, I proposed nothing at the time.
Yes, I recall, you voted against.
And everybody wanted to go with 20, and so I've talked to several, several people, and 10 seems to work a lot better for most people that I've talked to.
I have no problem with 10. I mean, you know, we all pay for it one way or another, but if that's the way the council wants to go, I have no problem with $10.
Actually, another thought that I had, of course, after the committee meeting, was that if, in the same residence, you could do two for $20, $20 per sticker, but you could get a second one for no additional charge. I don't know how hard that would be for you guys to do, but that was a thought that came to me also, so...
Well, the motion right now, oh, John Brand, sorry.
Well, since I've been dragged in the conversation twice already, it'll make no difference at all to me, because I now buy four stickers for four vehicles, and I'll buy one sticker for one vehicle, so the total cost to me won't change, so I guess I don't care.
Any additional discussion?
$5.
All right. The motion, as it is right now, is to increase the transfer station decals from $5 to $20. The mo... The motion was made by Counsel Shakespeare and seconded by Counsel Lawless. All those in favor?
I guess I'm the only one in favor.
Well, I am. Motion fails.
Well, I'll make a motion then that we increase the transfer station sticker fee for each vehicle to $10.
Okay, it has been moved by Counselor Shakespeare and seconded by Counselor Lawless to increase the transfer station decals from $5 to $10. Any discussion?
In 2015.
In 2015. Any discussion?
Nope.
No, we already did public comment.
Oh, yeah, I guess it is a different motion, so.
We have to withdraw the motion in a second.
We would have to withdraw the motion to do public comment.
Well, if, do you wish?
It is completely up to you. I don't think there's anybody to comment, but. Okay, it's been moved by Counsel Shakespeare, seconded by Counsel Lawless to increase the transfer station decal from $5 to $10. All those in favor?
You got discussion.
Oh, I said discussion. Is there discussion? Yes, Tom Brand, sorry.
I'll still only buy one.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, no? All those in favor? Item 4E. Proposed council rule change adding agenda heading for news presentations and awards by Mayor Dupree. That's me. I introduced this idea to the, in the Finance Committee two weeks ago, and there was no opposition to the idea, so I've decided to put it on the agenda. Recognition is very important. I would like to make sure that when we recognize someone such as when Counselor Shakespeare did his key presentation, or when Representative Dupree gives a legislative sentiment, that there's a place on the agenda for it. It would be located directly after the consent agenda. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Is there any council discussion? Yes, Counsel Brand?
I only, probably won't make any difference to anyone, but there is a condition of the rules, that no change shall be made to the rules until the item has been posted in writing on a previous agenda. And this is our first exposure on a town council agenda.
Yes, you are correct. I actually have it, this was just the introduction to it, and I have here that it would be placed on the item, on the agenda for April 8th meeting, and a motion would be in order at that meeting. So I was not going to call for a vote today, but is there any additional discussion? No? Okay, so it will be placed on the agenda for the April 8th meeting, and a motion will be in order at that meeting. And another proposed rule change, and again, this one would not be voted on tonight. And this is just, again, an idea, but of adding call inability for questions during council meetings. This idea is brought to me by my husband, Brian Dupree. His legislative seatmate is Jim Gillway, town manager of Searsport. He showed Brian how they, at Searsport, they have call inability. And we thought that elderly and disabled citizens at home might want to weigh in on what goes on at council meetings. They allow citizens to call in during public comment sections and voice their questions or comments to the council. They must follow all procedures that current residents do, with the exception that they would be allowed to comment on items that are on the agenda, since they only have one comment time. And we have to look into ways that we can do this, whether we could have our video person taking the phone calls. All it would be is they would take the question, we would state the question and answer it on the air so that people could get their answers. And so that's something we've looked into because it's just during public comment time at the beginning. So anything we can do, again, to encourage the participation of local government of our fellow citizens would be encouraged. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Council discussion.
So we opening it up for calling in every time we ask for public comment?
No, only at the beginning, only during the public comment time at the beginning of the meeting, before we start the agenda. And that's why they would be allowed to ask questions about items on the agenda. Any other? Yes, Counsel Shakespeare?
Well, is Greg done?
Are you done?
No, I'm done. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Personally, I think it's ridiculous. I have nothing against the public out there wanting to know. There's many avenues that they can do it. You know, my feeling is, geez, why don't we, you know, it's almost becoming a, like my son who's watching this right now, he says, "Dad," he says, "it's better than watching Saturday Night Live." He says, "All the things that go on." And it's like a TV reality show now, having the public call in. We don't know who they are. Somebody could call in and say, "I'm Tom Brand, and I'm," geez, Tom Brand's sitting right here. How can that be? You know? I had that done to me once in court, where the judge was going to allow an individual to call in and testify against me until my lawyer stopped it. You know, I mean, we don't know who these, who's calling. They can identify themselves as Mrs. Jones on Ichabod Lane, or hopefully there's not one on Ichabod Lane. I'm just using that as an example, but, you know, I'm against it. I think it's going to make it too complicated, it's going to drag the meeting out. We want to get out of here at 9:30 as it is, or you do, Madam Mayor, which we, you know, push to do, but I'm against it. My opinion.
Any other council discussion? Yes, Counsel Brand?
I'm also against it, and primarily for the fact that there is no way to verify the identity of the person on the other end of the line.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Okay, this item will be on the agenda for the April 8th meeting, and a motion will be in order at that time. Council authority outside of council meetings, Counselor Brand.
Nothing.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Since there is none, no discussion. Public comment closed. Item 4H. Questions regarding NESCOM filming of March 3rd, 2014, Counsel Shakespeare.
Well, this is not listed the way I requested the town manager to list it, but that's okay. I've, I'm going to say what I'm going to say anyways, and I just want to say, first of all, this is no personal attack on any individual. It's my opinion, as I have said many times tonight, that's my opinion. And it's my feelings on what I was subjected to and what was done to me. And I'll read this. And I appreciate it, Madam Mayor, if you would not interrupt me. "I'd like to address the council and public tonight on a serious matter that I would like addressed formally and request some formal solid legal answers to. On the 5th of March at 4:46 PM, two days after the last town meeting, I received a call from the town manager, Sue Lazard, telling me that Representative Brian Dupree had just informed her that a male town counselor had called NESCOM. NESCOM stands for New England School of Communication at Hussin University in Bangor, and threatened or harassed the videographer, so he will not do any more work for HALO, which is Hampden Association of Landowners. I had no knowledge of this matter, stated so, and asked what Representative Brian Dupree had to do with this. The town manager then stated that a female member of HALO had told Dupree, or Representative Dupree, about this matter. After visiting the town manager in person an hour after she called me, I asked the town manager if she had called any other town counselors. She stated that she had not, seeming to indicate to me that I was a target of suspicion for this false allegation. When asked why I was singled out, the town manager, Sue Lazard, stated that she presumed I was unhappy with the videoing. My first question I want to pose is this: Why am I being accused of this when every male counselor on the council was opposed to it and voted against it? By this accusation voiced through the town manager, and through the mayor and her husband with their knowledge, they are alleging that I committed the crime of criminal threatening. I want to see what evidence they have that points to me, since there is none, because I did not threaten anyone, as I will read proof of in a second. I want this looked into legally by the authorities, and want to know why it is allowed for town, for town officials to accuse citizens and counselors of crimes without evidence, just like the Gestapo did in Nazi Germany, the Salem witch trials in Massachusetts, or Saddam Hussein in his death courts in Iraq, where the innocent who held different, differing opinions than their dictators were done away with until no dissenting opinions remained. The situation becomes even more bizarre at this point. When I pressed the issue and visited the town office to seek answers, in the 10 minutes it took to drive there, as Sue Lazard stated when I arrived, she stated that it was all a misunderstanding because she had just conducted an investigation, which she should have done before she called me. At that point, apparently, no threat had ever been voiced to the videographer. The town manager stated that the female member of HALO, whom I desire to have the name revealed, and I will not at this moment, so we can know who is creating false legal allegations, had misstated the facts, and no threats had been made to the videographer. Upon meeting with the police chief, Sue Lazard, my wife, and Counselor Tom Brand, and not letting these false legal allegations drop, NESCOM at Hussin University cleared up the situation by letting Sue Lazard know that no phone calls was ever made to NESCOM. NESCOM sent an email to this female member of HALO informing her that they no longer desired to be involved in what they had been exposed to when HALO asked them to video for them. Sue Lazard stated that the videographer was uncomfortable to work for HALO. So to conclude, I would like the answers to the following from the town manager, Sue Lazard, answered in an official, public manner, so that I know my rights are as important as a HALO member or a member of other closed society groups that hand out petitions at the Hampden transfer station on weekends to pass their special agenda and impose their will on citizens. We all see who is in their group and how they have secured a majority stronghold on the council. Now they continue to plot and find a way to pick off anyone who opposes their view, regardless of the lack of evidence of their allegations or what rights are violated. We have a council to represent the people, not so that a special interest group can win dominance in votes and plot in their own meetings on how to run the town. Are you, as citizens, comfortable that your town's fate is determined in secret, closed-door meetings, under the cover of darkness, without transparency? Are you comfortable, as they throw false criminal allegations at counselors out there, hoping they stick, hoping that they can tarnish the reputation of their opponents and make them disappear from the council, which was done to me over a year ago? Let me just remind you that this is how Nazi Germany started. It started with the Nazi Party wiping out their opponents in government, making people pledge their oath to ensure loyalty and obedience in meetings, and pushing forward with their secret agenda right before everyone's eyes. So I want answers, I want to know from the town manager the following: Why was I falsely accused while no other counselor was? All male counselors opposed to videoing, so why was I accused of criminal threatening when there was no evidence and NESCOM at Hussin University never made that allegation? Why did a female HALO member have so much pull and influence over the town manager, mayor, and state representative that they instantly believed her allegations that a male town counselor had called Hussin University and threatened or harassed the videographer without any evidence? If there was criminal activity alleged, why didn't the mayor approach the police chief and approach this legally? Why was the town manager involved in approaching a town counselor at all? That was me. And why did the mayor, Carol Dupree, not respond to my questions about this situation in the email I sent her? How much, how will the town rectify the fact that they are aware that one of their counselors was falsely accused of criminal act through the town manager, the mayor, and state representative? Will there be an apology, an investigation by the police, or is it permissible in our town to hold a Salem witch trial where you can falsely accuse citizens and counselors of crimes and allow them to possibly get charged, which we have recently had some false police reports charged against us, and disappear if they disagree with the HALO agency that is being formed behind closed doors? I say "we," my wife and I. I ask the citizens to take a serious look at the secret society of HALO that is operating in this town of Hampden to advance their own agenda. While it may be me getting falsely accused today, it may be you or any other citizen tomorrow if you oppose the idea of HALO's. The response to this issue by the town will be telling on how much influence this group has. Thank you. And that's the end of my questions regarding NESCOM. But I would like to know if the town manager wants to speak. I don't know if I have to go as you, Madam Mayor, and say exactly why I, as a counselor, the only counselor, was called about this, and why she didn't, when she heard these charges from a state representative, and knowing where the source came from, why she didn't first say, "I've got to verify this," and why she called Counselor Shakespeare.
I will let Manager Lazard respond first, and then I will respond, and then because you named Representative Dupree, I will let him respond.
As we discussed, when I called you, when we met with the police after, and when you raised this issue again, I never accused you of anything. I asked you a question, and I asked you the question because the issue had been raised. And believe it or not, and I know you don't, I was trying to get ahead of this. The problem is that this, I don't, I can't find another word, but craziness that is going on between the audience and members of this council is making managing this almost an impossibility. If I, I have always felt that I could call any counselor and ask them anything, and it wasn't to accuse them, it was to try to get ahead of one more catastrophe that makes us as a group look like idiots. I did not accuse you. I asked you, and I explained to you, and have four times since, why I did that. I have verified with NESCOM that nobody ever called. I have said that when people ask questions that are gauged to make you jump in the air, if you stopped jumping, they would, the fire would go out. But you don't accept that from me. And so now here I am. I am so frustrated that I am not quite sure what to do next, but, but the idea that, that you've been accused, and this is Nazi Germany, Bill Shakespeare, that's ridiculous. I am, I have not treated you badly. I have, I have answered every, you don't like the answers, so you keep asking, but the answer is, I didn't accuse you. You're not under investigation for anything. If somebody says that somebody from here called something, when I, why would your name pop into my head? We have this ongoing thing, Bill. It is not unreasonable for me to say to you, geez, I need to ask you this question to get ahead of this. I want to be able to say affirmatively to anybody, I know that that's not true. And so if I ask you that question, and I can say that affirmatively, nobody from the outside is going to be able to say to me, "Yes, he did." But the idea that, that I am part of some- But the idea that, that I am part of some plot, I can't tell you how offensive that is, because I've never given you, not since years ago, when you stood in front of this council for six months and tried to get me fired and the police chief fired, because I was part of a plot then. I wasn't then, I'm not now. I resent the implication that I am. As far as I'm concerned, folks, this has gone far enough. We have dissented to a place where our agendas are comprised of who can poke who with a sharp stick that is not conducive to good business in this town. And people aren't, aren't proud of us because we're behaving that way. I am so out of order, it is beyond belief, but somebody has to say this. Somebody has to say enough. I am not doing this like this anymore. We're going to conduct business and move on, or the council might as just as well go home. This is not the business of the people. That's all I have to say. Enough.
And all I have to say is, I was asked a question, I was told something that, that a counselor called. I relayed that message. End of story. I never mentioned your name, ever. They never mentioned your name. No one ever mentioned a name to me. And as far as why, if I thought a criminal act was, had happened, why didn't I call the police chief? I didn't think a criminal act had happened, so I just asked a question. So that's my comment. And Representative Dupree, did you want to comment at all?
I'd like to apologize to Sue for having to deal with this crap. You know, we, we deal with each other on a, on Brian Dupree Monroe Road. We deal with each other constantly with state representative stuff, and I just happen to be here doing something, and I had gotten an email, and I just forwarded that to you. And you know what? You did your job, and you did it well. And, and Bill, I could see how you could perceive that, Ms. Counselor Shakespeare. I've been nothing but nice to you. My wife has been nothing but nice to you. We just don't get nice back. We want to be friends. We want to be cordial. I've invited you to the State House. I've got new papers if you wanted to run for legislature. I've been nothing but nice to you. My wife's been nice to you. But all we get is this back. You know, it's a two-way street. You know, a nice I could be to Counselor Brand, sometimes I don't get that back either. You know, it's not an easy job, what I do, and it's sure as heck not an easy job, what you do. But it is embarrassing to watch you guys. It is embarrassing. You know what you look like? Sore boozers. I'm in the minority, I've been in the minority for 10 years. I haven't won a vote in 10 years. Suck it up, man up and get over it.
I would like to make one more comment, actually. I actually already... One second, please. I would also like to say that I am not a member of Halo, have never attended a Halo meeting, so the thought that I'm in some secret society is another, another thing. And, oh, yes, you may speak.
My name is Janet Hughes, 34 Old County Road, and I just don't know what to say, and I hear what I, I really didn't hear anything that was just said because there is just, it's so big. And I don't understand where this council's going. I don't understand how it got here, and I heard, what I just heard from Mr. Dupree is personal, and, and it's unfair. That's my opinion. And I think that it's time to think about how we're going to continue to run this town. It's constant fighting, and I hear, so well said, Sue Lazard, and that's not to one counselor, it's to all of you, because this is not working, and perhaps you ought to open your ears and step outside and walk around the school, or walk around the grocery store and find out what the silent majority is seeing right now and what they're thinking. And I don't mean to point fingers at everyone here, but this isn't working, and it's one agenda item after the other, after the other, from this side, that side, this, and wow, whatever happened to working together and respecting others' opinion? I've always said, every person in this town deserves to be represented, and that means, that means that there'll always be differing opinions, and it should be that way, it shouldn't be one way. Thus, there would be no need for you. We don't need six of you, of the same people. We need six different people representing districts. Six, right? Or is it seven? I ask that you all think about that, and perhaps a special meeting, a committee meeting, to decide how it is we're going to proceed and work together, and start working on some important things, budget meetings, where it's a crisis. Re-zoning, I mean, we're finally seeing some things, but there's a lot of work. Codification of the, of this, of the ordinances hasn't even begun because you're so busy fighting with each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
If I may, Madam Mayor, after Ivan, go ahead.
Yeah, I've known you for a long time, Bill, and I don't know whether you're referring to me or not, but one of your, I don't, Halo is, I guess, some sort of a group. I don't belong to Halo, and I don't know if you're including me or not, but your statement was they, they won the majority of the, of the council. Vote on the council. And I don't know if you're including me in that or not, but if you are, I take offense to that, because I don't know who Halo is, I, I don't know what they do.
Well, my apologies to you, Ivan, if I was wrong. That's fine, that's fine. But can I speak, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sue, this would never, now you say you called me and you asked me. Well, no, you didn't. My wife was listening to the phone call. You never asked me. You said, you made the statement, and I immediately responded, well, it wasn't me, I didn't call, because I did it in response to what you called me about, okay? Now, this is where I'm coming from. You have five females out there in your main office. All of them have access to your cash drawer, I take it, okay? This is just an analogy. If all of a sudden you're missing $20 out of that cash drawer, are you going to pull, there's five male counselors, are you going to pull one female aside and say, I'm just using an example of a name, I don't know, hopefully there's none that, Mary Jane, we're missing $20 from that cash drawer? And you wait for her response. How do you think Mary Jane's going to feel? She's going to feel like she's been accused. Well, that's how I felt. I was being accused of making this phone call to this boy at Nescom. How can you not understand that? You did, now let me finish, please. You had your turn, this is my turn. You say, because of my interaction with the public, well, you know what? I have been harassed by this public out there at times, not all of them, but some of them. I've heard, I've been on here five years, and my God, we've heard cat calls, we've heard laughing, we've heard comments. I can hear them, and some of the public can hear them too, and see, see them being made. Now, I think this mayor, yes, I agree, I used to enjoy coming to these council meetings. I used to look forward to them. You know what? I've been on pins and needles here for the, this last week because of this situation that happened. I can't even sleep at night. And I'm tired. I was, in my mind, even though you may not have intended to do it, you called one person, one male counselor, me. Did I take it personal? You betcha I did. Just like any girl would out there, if you said, "We're missing $20," she'd take it very personal. No. What you should have done, Sue, and you know better, your management techniques, you should have known where that accusation came from. That email, okay? You didn't tell me it was an email. You, all you told me was Brian Dupree told you. That's what you told me.
That's what occurred.
That's fine. You should have said, "Where did it come from?" And you should have said, "Well, I've got to double-check this, because I am not going to call Bill Shakespeare and even ask him if he did it." You know I, you know me. I'm going, I'm going to react to it. I don't keep my mouth shut, and I'm not going to, as long as I'm on this council. And that thing years ago had no relevance here, whatever, when I asked you for your resignation, because my wife and I have been attacked, attacked, and attacked continuously by that same female that apparently made this same accusation. Okay? So how did you expect me to react, other than that? You should have called Nescom, and if you'd called Nescom, you would never have called me. You would have found out, no, no phone call had ever been made, and Bill Shakespeare didn't make that phone call. That's all. That's, you know, that's the end of it. I'm sorry if I hurt anybody's feelings. It's not a matter of losing, getting over anything, as Representative Dupree said. I'm not a sore loser. I don't know what the devil he's talking about. That's a personal attack, and I thought, Madam Mayor, we were not going to allow personal attacks on this council. So, you know, was I irritated? Was I mad? Yes, I was mad. And, you know, all I've heard is Halo, 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 and Halo's done this, and Halo's done that. And I wish Halo didn't exist, because I'd like this town council to get back to business like we got voted for, by the citizens, to do town business. End of statement.
I apologize for calling you, Bill. I can tell you right now, never, ever, in the future, will I make a call trying to get ahead of something. And if you hear something outside of this organization, don't tell me I didn't call you, because if you had heard that outside of me telling it to you, it would have been, "I'm keeping a secret." So I'm, I'm also done with this subject, and I truly hope that as we move forward, that we can deal with items on the agenda that relate to the business of the town.
Yes, yes, we can, but, you know, you just should have called all the counselors, or you should have emailed all the counselors and said this, not just one, okay? That's a bad management practice, far as I'm concerned.
Counselor Lawless?
Okay, two things. One is, Sue, please call me. When you call me and give me a heads up, I really appreciate it. And the other is, I keep coming back to these two words, like, personal and political, and when someone has, starts a conversation with me, sends an email, something's going on, and I look at it and I say, "Wow, this is getting personal," or "This is political, I just want to do this." Na, 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 na. Right? Talk to me about, like, town business. Don't make it personal, don't make it political, because that's not what we're here for.
I agree. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the next item. Budget concerns and school budget impact, Counselor Saroy.
I think we beat that up. No further comments.
Okay. Thank you. Did any other counselors have any further comments on that? Okay. Any member of the public wish to make comments on this? Okay. Item 4J. This is possible violation of code of ethics by a town counselor. Ladies and gentlemen, I must ask you to clear the building as we will be going into executive session pursuant to...
Do you have any public comment on this item prior to going into executive session, please?
Excuse me, before we even go there, I either missed something or, did we talk about item C at all? Charter amendments relative to citizens petition?
Yes.
I don't believe we discussed it.
Which one was that?
Item C, under new business 4C.
Yes, ADA?
No. 4C.
That was removed from the agenda before it went up. Your packet had already been delivered. That was removed because those petitions are no longer, are in play for this coming election at all. They've been, they're, they're not going to be submitted or anything for the general election. There's nothing to do with that to put on the chart, the agenda at this time.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I don't think we, because there, we cannot let the public know what this is about, I don't think that we can allow public comment.
You can go into executive session, which you discuss the items that I mean in detail, and I'm not asking for confidential information. Again, tonight, you apparently don't have respect for my opinion on my public comment.
Excuse me, but I...
Executive session.
Wait.
All I'm asking for is public comment regarding going into executive session. I don't see what the issue is.
One, I have, first, it's not that I don't respect your opinion, it's that I was going by the rules once public comment is asked for, a vote, a motion has been made, and a motion has been seconded, according to the rules, there is no more public comment. It was not your opinion. End of story. I don't want to discuss that.
Talking about this one.
I know, but, but she said...
The next item on the...
Because obviously I don't respect her opinion. Okay. Yes, next item on the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
The item is on the agenda.
Right.
We, I don't believe we have had a motion and a second and a vote to go into executive session. So I think the public, this is an item on the agenda, they have a right to speak on it. They're going to be sort of speaking in the dark, because they, you know, we're not going to disclose what it's about, and we really won't know until we go into executive session. So, I mean, I think you can accept public comment on this item that's on the agenda, but it's just going to have to be a...
You can make public comment.
First, I had questions regarding you, you moving into an executive session and why, but apparently that's not going to be discussed tonight. Second, it was my understanding that you needed to provide notice of going into an executive session. I don't see that here tonight. Is that the case? Is there public notice of you?
It's on the agenda, it's executive session, yes.
And so I will tell you that I can only suspect, after the last week or two of one phone call that I received or email, that what this is about, and I have absolutely no idea what you, what you truly are talking about, except for this conversation. The items that have been before executive session, I assume, is regarding the Sargent Business Park proposal. That, that, excuse me, but that's not executive confidential information. It's a public, all right.
I have no idea what we're discussing, so...
Can you let me make a public comment or not?
No, no public comment.
It's not regarding any confidential nature of the current proposal being reviewed. I'm not, I'm not, you can trust me, I, do I know everything about that, that project. I will tell you that I have worked on the business park projects, many projects on the business park. It includes, and...
Wait, could you wait one second?
That comment is not, those comments are not relative to this item on here.
The comments that I'm making do, and it's based on...
How do you know?
Based on the email that I received.
Well, you know.
How do you know it's related to this?
Will you tell me that, whether it's related to this?
Well, it can. No. It's private.
Mr. Saroyes?
Mr. Saroyes, you've given other people opportunity for public comment, and I'm asking you not to, not to be patient and to listen to my comment, both of you, please.
I don't, I...
I'm, I'm asking you to, to listen to my comments. I'm not, I've been involved in the town for a number of years, and been involved in the executive sessions, and anything that has happened...
Out of order. I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm asking you for a public comment.
And I am saying no. Because of the issue at hand.
And you have the right to tell me no.
Yes, I do.
This is exactly what I'm, what I've talked about before, is I'm asking you to listen to my comment. You can tell me, don't name names, you can tell me, again, no executive session.
Out of order.
I'm asking you for public comment. Why is it that you shut me down?
How can you comment on something that you don't know what it is?
I can comment.
And if you make, if you make comments that lead to what it is, that's, that's not okay. Because you shouldn't know what it is. And if you do, that's a problem. Which means someone discussed it with you.
Understood. Understood. Pardon me? What did you just say?
Which, if you know what it is, that's a problem, because that means it was discussed with you of what would be...
It was not discussed with me.
Okay, thank you.
Except for the item that is described, possible violations by a counselor.
Okay.
This is what I want to, this is what I want to say. You can stop me again. I just respectfully ask...
Go ahead, quickly.
I will not mention names or any content. The, I've, I got an email while I was on vacation, asking if I had privileged information. And I will tell you that the subject of concern, I've had the opportunity to have privileged information for many, many, many months. I've been, I've received emails, I've reviewed plans, I've reviewed documents, reviewed other legal information. And that information, I maintain myself as confidential, and I continue to do so and will. Thank you. Okay?
Okay.
And what, what I'm saying to you is, I get it, question, do I have any information? I said, no, I don't. I'm on vacation in Florida, have not seen any emails. However, I will call my office if there is any emails. I will have those emails or any other correspondence deleted. I've not seen any information. I've not seen any confidential information since I've left office the 1st of January. But what I will tell you is that this, there, if that information was sent, I assure you that it was not malicious.
Thank you.
And, and I feel that this, it appears to be another one of those jumping...
Out of order, out of order.
It appears that it's another one of those sharp sticks.
Out of order. Public comments are over.
Carol, let me finish, please.
I would like, no, I will not. I would like a motion to move to executive session, please.
I make a motion to move to executive session.
Second?
I will ask you that...
All those in favor?
If my name is in the executive session...
You have to cite the sections.
Okay.
Again, I'm very appalled at the way this council conducts business.
I make a motion to move to executive session pursuant to one MRS section 405, 6A, 405, 6E, and 405, 6F.
I have a second. All those in favor to move to executive session? All right, we are now in executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, I must ask you to clear the building. Thank you.
I can stay in the hallway.
No.
You can stay in the hallway.
We'll, we'll have to go out of executive session and finish that.
I don't do it.